Committee of the Whole for Community Grants. So after the Committee of the Whole meeting, the public hearing and the regular meeting will start. So anyone who wants to join the regular meeting, public hearing can exit this one and go on to the next. For councilors, the link is in an email. For the public, it's on our website. Anyone wants that? So we're calling this meeting to order and we're going to adopt the agenda and then we're going to go to public input and let anyone on the line who wants to speak about their community grant talk. So I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda. Janice moves it and Dirk seconds it. All in favor of the agenda? Okay, so now we're going to go to public input. And this is where anyone who wishes, any of the attendees who wish to speak to your proposal, and I'm just going to call on you in the order that I see you here, and it won't necessarily be the order that we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about the proposals. Whoops, hold on one second. I've got another thing I want to do. I want to let everybody know also that what we're going to do, there's a couple of comments I want to make about this process. This is always challenging because the intent of this fund is to help nonprofits to support and serve our local community. Council has dedicated 5.62% of our own source revenues to support the community grants. In 2021, this is anticipated to be a little over $287,000. But as with any grant fund that we deal with, there's always more demand than there is money available. And today, requests total of almost $326,000. We will do our best to be as fair as possible, but you know, there may be some disappointment. So first, we're going to hear from the groups who want to speak to us. I would request that you do not repeat material that's already in your application. We've read all your applications. We want to hear anything else that you would like us to know about, any extra details of your group or your proposal. Then council is going to talk about if there are any of the groups that have applied that we are actually not going to be able to fund. And then we will discuss all of the remaining groups and they will be discussed in the order of the spreadsheet that council has. We'll try and come to some consensus on how to allocate money. We have three new applicants this year and several groups have asked for increases. So this automatically creates the unfortunate situation where not everyone is likely to get everything they want. But it doesn't mean that we don't value your contributions and it doesn't mean that, you know, we don't appreciate everything you do. But we do have to operate within a budget, just as we all do with our home budgets as well. Okay, so I'm going to start. The first person on the top of my list is Blackjack, Adele Pratt. You can speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Well, I'm not sure if I have anything that I need to say that's not actually in our application already. However, I'd just like to say that if we do receive any funds, it will help us put more money in our reserve fund to put towards things like purchasing of a new groomer and maintenance on our expensive, very, very expensive equipment. We're also in the midst of working on our strategic plan, which hopefully we'll have published in the new year, which should include some new infrastructure that will benefit all the community. We're already up to 900 members this year. Normally, we have 730 members, but we're already up to 900 this year. So I think we are serving a large proportion of our population. And I think everyone is really appreciating being able to get out there and get some fresh air and cross-country ski during this pandemic. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask council, do you have any questions for Blackjack about their proposal? Okay, I'm going to move on to Tourism Roslyn. Andres, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you folks hear me? Hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't really have a whole lot to add. I just want to thank council for going through this process. I know that it's not easy to allocate funds for an oversubscribed program. So I really appreciate the efforts that you're going through. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about Tourism Roslyn.
Okay, thanks. Counsel, are there any questions about Tourism Roslyn? Janice?
Hi Andres, how are you?
I'm good. How are you, Janice?
I'm well, thank you. I was just wondering, I guess you guys used to get a bit more Destination B.C. funding? And I saw your answer to the email that you are expecting to get $50,000 this year. Was there another stream that you were applying for previously or that Tourism Roslyn applied for previously that's no longer available to you? Or is there some other reason that you're not applying there?
No, there is nothing else available. So we don't know what we're going to get for next year. The province decided that they're going to grandfather in last year's application. So basically, they said they don't have to reapply this year. They will just make, we'll get money, they make a decision. And then there's also some emergency funding that's floating around that we might get, we might not get. The province understands that DMOs, Destination Marketing Management organizations and city level are in a strange position because we basically running on flat revenues because the hotel industry is not really operating right now. And we're hoping that it's going to change soon. So yeah, we expect provincial funding to come in, but we don't know what, how it's going to look like.
Okay, yes, Janice?
Sorry, I did have just one other part I noticed in your write-up, which was excellent, by the way. Thank you. That you said your non-peak season accommodation revenue is the highest in our history. Was that for this summer?
No, it wasn't for this summer. That was last summer.
Okay.
Well, that was, all that financial data I had was for the summer of 2019. The summer of 2020. I have the data and it's obviously very low. Although, again, if I would send you the data and I don't want to get into details, it looks all over the place because there were tax deferrals from businesses. So it looks like July was the best month we ever had because we got some money from February. But no, our revenues were extremely low. So we're probably operating at 50% of what we used to have.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions for Tourism Roslyn? Yes, Chris?
I do. Andres, you mentioned in your report that you were working off of your reserves. How deep did you have to go this year?
Well, we made the, the board made the decisions that we're going to actually, going to use. If we need to, we're going to go and empty our reserves, hoping that we need that for the recovery. That being said, because there's all this stop and goes to marketing, I don't anticipate that we're going to spend all of our reserves actually, because we would be spending right now. But obviously, everything we do right now is on hold. So once we can start marketing in January, we'll start going. But I don't anticipate that we're going to actually empty all of our reserves. So hopefully, we're going to have some left at the end of the season.
Okay, that's, that's great. All right, next up, I have RCAC. And I see a couple people from RCAC. So Andy, are you the speaker or somebody else? Looks like Andy. Is Andy unmuted? Okay.
Unmuted. There. Does that work? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you and welcome.
Yeah, I don't know. I suppose you can see me. You're a good-looking bunch. I didn't need to do my hair after all. First, thanks for the opportunity to just say a few words. We, we did omit some information from our application because we understood you were trying to streamline things a little bit. And I don't want to prejudice our application by not discussing some of our achievements this current year and some of our plans for next year. But first up, I'll just mention that our request is a standstill request from last year of $10,000. Our annual budget is $100,000 in round terms. And our general and administrative costs for operating the organization are about $30,000. So the municipal community grant of $10,000 represents substantial portion of our operating expenses or revenues, which cover our programs. 70% of our budget goes back into the community and projects. And some of those projects you've seen in evidence of already this year. I'm just going to review some of them. Under the performance series, we had two performances early in the year, in January and February. That was a theater production and music performance, Chasmoridium. And we have plans for some programs in the first half of the new year, subject to COVID restrictions. We have an agreement in place with council to make use of the Lily May Room. We understand that the COVID regulations limit the number of people we can squeeze in there. But we do hope to be able to run a couple of back-to-back one-hour performances within an interval to change out the audience, sterilize and bring in a new audience. In the public art area, you'll have seen some signs of our achievements there. There's a new statue outside the minus hall. We call him Lily May. Beautiful piece that I think really does a great job of setting off the minus hall and really looks good in front of it. And we had our first carving symposium in September. We had three carvers working in downtown area on Columbia. Three wood carvings were produced and installed on Centennial Trail. And that has received a lot of positive feedback from the community for hosting that event and pulling it off in spite of COVID. We have also purchased V formation. Those are the geese outside the chocolate shop. So that's now a permanent part of our collection for public art. In visual arts, there were two major successes this year. The first was the Art of Adornment, our first fashion show gala held in the minus hall, which received a lot of enthusiastic support and something that we'll probably repeat again in the future when COVID allows. So that, that was a smash hit. And then we had in November, the Art of Craft exhibition held at the Bank of Montreal. And over 11 days, we saw 250 people come through and view that exhibition. And a number of them purchased pieces, which was deemed a very successful exhibition. There are plans for two more exhibitions in the new year. One on photography in February and a spring equinox exhibition in March. In our youth program, we've run two outdoor camps, one on mountain biking in June and one in the skate park in September for youth. We had six youth attend each of those. And currently, there's a youth winter coloring contest underway in town. A lot of enthusiastic kids coloring in and submitting their drawings. And we have a skateboard, snowboard painting workshop planned for January. So that's in the youth program. And finally, I'd just like to mention the arts plan, the conclusion of a process. It's almost a year and a half old now to generate an arts plan for Roslyn. That document has been completed and finalized. It should be in your hands this, now. If you haven't already seen it, you will do very soon. And that is, the, the timing of that was intended to coincide with the OCP planning process that you're undergoing at the moment so that it might feed into that. So I think I've spoken to all of the major programs and points. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions that council may have.
Counsel, any questions? I have one, Andy. Do you have an estimate of how much revenue was lost for canceling programs that you had planned on doing in 2020?
Yeah, we, we have probably lost about $15,000 in revenues. But that is offset by a decrease in expenses because, you know, we didn't have to pay the artists and the sound techs and so on. Most of the, those lost revenues or earned revenues from the performance series, which, which we sadly had to postpone.
Okay, okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Megan, you were also there for Roslyn Council for Arts, RCAC. Do you want to add anything or did Andy do a good job and cover it all? Okay, I'm going to say no if I don't hear from her. Okay, I'm going to move on to Dave Diplock, so KC TS.
Good evening, council. Nothing too much to add to our application other than the trails have been helping people with their snow anxiety as we're waiting for more to show up. So if there's any questions you might have, I'm here to answer them.
Okay, that's great. Counsel, any questions for KC TS? Moving there. Okay, short and sweet. I'm not seeing any hands. And you guys yell out if I miss you because I might, I might miss you. Okay, so Doug Jones, looks like Trail Chamber is up.
Yeah, I don't have a whole bunch to add to what Erica presented. But if there are any questions, I certainly will answer them.
Okay, counsel, any questions for the chamber? This is one of our new patients.
I know it was asked, Andy here, I know it was asked that we, we get some idea of the number of Roslyn businesses that are now participating in the chamber. Doug, could you confirm what our membership is here at Roslyn now?
You know what? I don't have those figures right in front of me, but I believe it's 15.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I'm getting a note that we can't have Megan talk without making her a panelist. So I'm hoping that Megan doesn't have anything to add, or if she does, call Andy. Hey, sorry about that. All right, next up, we have Jan Lupin. So Jan, are you here for Blackjack? Sorry, I didn't catch you there when I got Adele on. Is Jan able to speak? We may be having the same trouble.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, Adele is representing Blackjack. I'm just listening in.
Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Nothing to add.
That's all right. Okay, now we have Wild Safe, looks like. Wild Safe, Hamloops, BCCF.
Hello, Maryne Council. It's Vanessa Nardi, the Provincial Coordinator here from Wild Safe B.C. I'm here to represent Wild Safe B.C. and answer any questions regarding our application. As day, we're looking for a three-year commitment to match the year commitments we have from neighboring trail and be here, there to support you if you decide to pursue verse mark community status, which is quite exciting.
Okay, that's great. Does anyone have any questions for Wild Safe? I have one. Has there been any progress of getting Warfield involved? Because they are right between Trail and Roslyn, right in the bear corridor, so to speak.
Absolutely. So because we have funding from the Columbia Basin Trust, we also do visit Warfield and do some education for them as well.
Okay, that's great. All right, counsel, any questions for Wild Safe? All right, we are moving on. Okay, I see Laura is there and also Sam. So are you both speaking for tennis or one of the other of you?
I think we're just here to ask, answer questions if you need any more information than what we sent.
Okay, okay, I think Sam had his hand up. Sam, did you have something to add?
Not really. Just weird answer questions. The change this year is we're asking for an increase to cover the insurance that the city asked us to get last year. Something we haven't done in the past.
Okay, council, any questions for tennis? So I had, I had a couple, actually. I'm still a little bit confused about the insurance myself because I thought the instructors, because they're Paul. Is Paul your only instructor, first of all?
Yes, and he carries his own insurance.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So the $2,000 insurance that you're carrying is just for really other volunteers? If somebody, I don't know, trips over a broom that one of your volunteers leaves out, something like that? Is that kind of, kind of it?
Well, the city hasn't really clarified exactly what we needed, except mainly quite a bit of liability. And we're, we're open to the public at all times. We're not on a private lease.
Right, okay. And then the other question that I had is, have you, have you done anything to maybe kind of increase the effectiveness of your membership drive or really encourage? I don't, I don't know how many, I don't play tennis myself, unfortunately. But I don't know how many people are good about putting the toony in the box or becoming members or that kind of thing. Do you do much in terms of a membership drive to try to increase your own revenues?
We're mostly dealing with maintenance, which is a lot more than it will be, hopefully, once the courts are reconstructed. There's just a real lot to do to keep the property and the courts going. And I'm not an administrator or a marketer.
Okay, all right, that's great. And we appreciate you keeping up the city-owned tennis courts, for sure. Okay, counsel, anything else on tennis?
Yeah, I've got a question, Kathy.
Yeah, go ahead, Stuart.
Yeah, I'm still not really clear on what's going on with this insurance. I mean, is there, has the Tennis Society actually received a quote for insurance?
I think that was $2,000.
But is that, that's, that's actually, is that what we're requiring of them? And is that actually a formal quote that is aligned with our requirement? Or is this just, I'm, I'm just not clear on this?
Yeah, I know. I think none of us are completely clear on this. Sam or Laura, do you have anything? Otherwise, we might just need to get staff's input on this.
I can, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I, this all came about because of the agreement that was given to the Tennis Society last year by the city and required us to maintain liability insurance for the courts. That was a requirement, $5 million. So we went out and got three quotes. The first quote was from RHC, which is Roslyn. It was $2,000. The second quote was from a company who recommended that we actually go through Sports B.C. So then I approached Sports B.C. and they came up, they wouldn't give us an exact number. But they said it would likely be cheaper than the $2,000, but not much, that we came out of RHC. The whole insurance thing is being driven by the city's requirement in the agreement that they put forward last year. In terms of memberships that you were asking about, that's a bit of a contentious issue on the executive about actually running memberships because none of the other cities in the area actually require memberships. So City of Trail, nobody else does it. We're kind of very unique in that way in a public court to actually charge a membership or a drop-in fee. In fact, we're the only ones in the area that I can think of that do that.
Yeah, well, some of those other places have some big taxpayers that helped defray their, and we're kind of nickel and diming, unfortunately. Okay, but in answer to Stuart's question, you got three quotes and $2,000 seemed to be the one that meets the city's requirements.
Yes, it'll be, we think it'll be a little bit cheaper than that. But we have to get that insurance, we have to join Sports B.C., which we've never done in the past.
Okay, thanks, Sam. All right, any other questions for tennis? Looks good. We are, we're moving on to the museum. I think that's probably Joel, but we'll see. Museum? Not sure if talking is permitted for the museum. Well, why don't we go on to the library and we'll see if, we'll see.
Hello?
Oh, yeah, okay, who've we got?
Yeah, Joel's here.
Okay, good, thank you. Do you have anything to add to your application?
No, but I can answer questions.
Okay, anybody have questions for the museum? We spent more time getting you live than we have questions for. So, okay, no questions for the museum. I see Judith Lawrence there, but I think she's probably tennis, which we've covered unless there's something else there. We are now to the Roslyn Library. Who've we got for library? Is that Beverly?
Hello.
Hello.
This is Catherine Spence. I'm representing the Roslyn Library. I'm a board member. I have a few things that I'd like to add in addition to our application. Okay, well, we're a really busy library. We get over 50,000 annual visits typically. That's one of the highest per capita uses in British Columbia. Also, through the library, our interlibrary loans gives us access to over 11 million items. So that's pretty great. Besides just the traditional books, we have a full catalog of eBooks. And we are now just starting to also be able to lend out e-readers COBO for patrons as well. One thing you may not know is that we have a platform of online courses. Those are called the Gale Courses, and they are free. There are over 350 courses. We've had over 73 people taking courses since March. Languages are really popular, but there's lots of IT, gardening, medical terminology, all kinds of things. So that, that's a really good addition that we have. We are also, I call us the unofficial office center for Roslyn. We have the only public printer, copier, scanner, which gets a lot of use. It's hands-free right now. We have several businesses that run a tab with us because it's cheaper to use our printer than to maintain their own. We, our meeting rooms get a lot of use, not right now, but in normal times, 80 uses a month. Last of all, we're really excited. We have a new project. We just got a big, nice donation from the Trail Bottle Depot as the charity of the month for November. And that's going towards putting in a professional art hanging system for local artists for, that's capable of hanging all different forms of art. And that'll be a really beautiful addition to our new renovation. So that's basically all I have. I want to thank you for your continuing support over all the years. And we are asking for an increase and that's because the minimum wage has gone up 4%, CPP is going up. And our insurance also went up 50% in 2020. Are there any questions for me?
Questions for the library, anybody? Doesn't look like it. We appreciate all you do and we also do understand and feel badly that the Roslyn Library is underfunded compared, compared to others. We did look at your report and the stats that were in there. So thank you for providing that. Okay, we still have the museum on the list who would like to speak, but I think we're having some technical difficulties there. Rachel, can you chime in and tell me what we're doing here?
This is Joel from the museum. I did.
You're in.
We already had Joel.
Yeah, there's no questions.
Oh, okay, okay, that's right, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mark you off my list. Okay, then I think we've hit everybody unless there's somebody else on there that we didn't get. Okay, good. Sorry about that. Okay, so now we've heard from all of our groups. And now we're going to move into the next part, which is the difficult part. We need a motion from any counselor who wishes to vote someone off the island. Are there any groups that we will not entertain a grant this year?
Okay. I will start that off. Andy, I will make a motion that we don't entertain supporting Golden Bear with their request.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Janice seconds it. Okay, Andy, give it. Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Jana seconds it. Okay, Andy, give us your rationale.
I looked at their application, and I know that it is a successful enterprise here in the community. And although they do work under the auspices of a society, they also use a business model. So I'm knowing that there is a high demand for for those services within our community, especially, it seems, in the last decade or so as we continue to have more and more kids within the community. There is also other private suppliers of childcare services in our community. I think it's really important to make sure that we don't differentiate or compete, create a competition between them that's that, you know, by supporting one over the other. So I think it's really important that we maintain that. And yeah, I I think that's that's my number one reason there.
Okay, and Janice as the seconder?
Andy's covered all the points I had as well.
Okay, further discussion. Stuart, got anything? Terry? Comments? You're muted.
Sorry. No, I follow that line of question. I it makes sense to me that we don't put our or into that sort of pond with with competing things. So I'd like to go along with what Andy has supported there.
Okay, Chris?
I feel the same way in an effort to maintain a level playing with the other entities in town here. If I would love to give five grand to everybody.
Okay, Dirk?
Yeah, my I concur with everyone.
Okay, the only the only comments I would make is that, you know, I see tremendous value in early education. It's really, really important, but this proposal does compete with our private daycare. And it wasn't a strong application to me for another reason, because when you look at their financials, they're in a strong financial position. And they don't seem they weren't. They haven't asked anyone else, and they don't seem to do a lot of their own own kind of fundraising. At least that didn't come through. And to me, those things are also important when someone's coming to ask for taxpayer money, that they also go to their own members, their own people who who use their services and see what they can get there. The other thing is that because of the way the province is set up, my understanding is that they, everyone is available is gets the same kind of subsidies from the government. So it's not like they offer childcare at a lower price than other daycares. So to provide supplies to them would definitely be competing. Okay, so I'm going to call the question on this one, all in favor of not supporting Golden Bear, although we love little kids. Okay, that passes. Okay, do we have any other? Any other group that we're going to not support at this point that anyone wants to make a motion about? The next thing we do is go through and discuss each one. I mean, we discuss them when we vote them off the island, too, but we can, you know, take them off now if we want. No? Okay, okay, so now, oh, what?
It just seems to be the only one that was unanimous from our spreadsheet. So everything else was discussing.
Okay, so now what I want to do is I want to get the spreadsheet up, which means I'm going to do something funny here with my screen. See if this works. I can't see anybody. Okay, hold on one second. Well, that's not going to work because I can't see you guys and still have my sheet there. Doesn't look like. And I'm not sharing my sheet. I'll come back. Okay. Hold on. All right, there you are. Okay, so we're just going to go through the sheets. First up, we have Blackjack. So, oh, good, thank you. That helps. That helps. Okay, I do want to say one thing that I that I did. I know I said we weren't going to do this based on the averages. But when everybody put their stuff into the spreadsheet and I looked at the averages, there was something that that did kind of make sense for most of them. But anyway, okay, so let's start off with Blackjack. Can I have a motion to do something with Blackjack? Janice?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to support Blackjack for $4,000. I feel like I'm playing Jeopardy here. Do I need? I'll wait for a seconder and then continue.
Okay, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Okay.
The reason that I I look at Blackjack and I think that we would like to maybe give them some support is that they provide a really great activity for a lot of Roslin people. As a matter of fact, you know, I went and I went back and looked to see how many people said they cross-country skied in the Modus Report. And it was 63% of the people, and it was the fifth most important activity. And one of the things that they said in their application was that they really wanted to get their books in order so that they had the possibility of going out and applying for additional grants from other people, which is always a good thing. And, you know, we do support a number of societies in their administrative duties or administrative work in the community. And I think that Blackjack provides some really great value for our community. You know, provides a service that attracts and retains residents. And and that's really what they're that's really all we can ask them to do.
Okay, and the seconder?
Let's be.
Yep, let's speak.
So relative to the ask, how, Kathy, are we going to apportion our recommended amounts? Is that going to be averaged out in the end?
You know what? I was hoping that we wouldn't do it that way with these. That's how we do with the SIP ones, right? And I was hoping we'd come to consensus on these. I did put a column in there. If you look at column D that's up there, that is the average from how it from how it is. And I'm not sure if it's going to work this way or if it's going to work this way or not. I mean, we're I think right now. I mean, originally, when I said we go through each group and talk about it, we don't. We actually don't necessarily have a motion on. We don't have to have a motion on the table because we might have some things as we go around. I don't want the first one being penalized because of something we do with the last one, you know? So maybe we should start over that a little bit and not have a motion on the floor. Just let everybody have their thoughts on the group, and then we'll come back and do motions. Everybody's okay to backstep. Stuart?
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that. It just seems, you know, we're, you know, unless we're going to be perfectly anticipating everything else, we could corner ourselves if we're fixing amounts as we go through.
Yeah, well, if you remember when I sent out my little thing about how we're going to do this, that's what I said we were going to do. And then I immediately didn't do it. So I'm sorry. I apologize about that. So let's have everybody go around, give us your thoughts about Blackjack, and we'll go to the next. And then we'll come back around and do the motions. Okay, so Andy, talk about Blackjack.
Okay, well, certainly feel that it's worthy of contribution, support. The club, as Janice had pointed out, has has become a main player in our community. And I know, as Adeline mentioned in her presentation, that the club has experienced 900-plus members this year, a record amount. And that's almost one in three or one in four people in the community. And I and it is. It is growing exponentially, and COVID has a lot to do with it. But I also anticipate that this growth will continue as people get to realize the value of this winter activity and the success of the club. And it is a volunteer volunteer-driven organization and has been very successful for over 30 years in the community. And its success now is especially appreciated by our community. I can't mention the number of people that had said they were so thankful, especially last winter, when when everything else closed down in March. Blackjack was able to maintain the facilities and continue into early May, actually. So I think they're very worthy of some support, and I would like to see, hopefully, people would, the rest of council will consider that.
Okay, that's great. And I had to add one other thing. We got to be kind of really quite succinct with our comments because we got a lot of groups to get through. We're supposed to finish by 45. So but thank you, Andy. That was valuable. All right, Dirk.
Can you can you hear me? I had to move rooms. Yep, for me, I looked at this so I don't have to repeat myself on others, the capacity of the organization to secure funds. And honestly, I think it's great that there's 900 memberships, but that's a small addition to each membership to cover the $13,000 ask. So for me, I felt that there are other really, really good avenues for them to get money. And I didn't support the ask on this one.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, the list of opportunities was was quite large, and I had a tough time supporting this one as well just for the reason that I believe that there are some others within this our group of choices that I'd like to support a little bit more.
Okay, Stuart?
Yeah, I mean, I love Blackjack and support it, but it's a fee-for-service organization. I can just charge everybody a little bit more. It's pretty simple.
Okay, thanks. Terry?
Two points that have been covered already. Their user fees could there could be through user fees, other ways to generate this income. And I was torn with the other asks that were on there, and this was a new one for them. And I was totally appreciative and love Blackjack, but hoping they can get by and allow us to spend our money across some other organizations.
Thanks. I agree with what people have said. I also am a devoted Blackjack fan, but I also do see there's other ways for them to get money. And I also worry that if we start supporting different clubs, membership-based clubs, there'll be more clubs that will come to us and ask us to cover their administrative fees, too. This differs from RCAC where RCAC isn't really membership-driven. They're event-driven and project-driven, and they don't have the same sort of ability to raise fees on things. So I see them different. But I look at, you know, Red Mountain Racers, right? They could come to us and want, you know, and want support for their group, too. And I think we do have to be careful and kind of stay to our our main our main mandate. Okay, so next one up is Seabee, which is we are pre-approved there because they still have an agreement going, so we don't need to talk about them. Golden Bear, we've covered. Sustainability Commission. This time I'm going to start with Terry.
Hi, great. Yeah, I think I've been connected with the Sustainability Commission for a long time, and I'd love to see their their work carry on. They've got a good core group of task forces that have a good work plan in front of them, and I think they're a bare bones operation as it was. So I think I'm happy to support their ask.
Hey, Stuart?
Yeah, I support the group. I didn't think they made as as strong a case on why they needed the size of that increase, but generally, I like what they're doing, and I gave them a bit of an increase there.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, very similar to that. I think that as we move into the OCP, the Sustainability Commission is going to be even more front and center. So I'd like to see them funded.
Okay, Janice?
Yeah, I really like what they're doing. I did give them a bit of an increase, or I, you know, I had planned on giving them a bit of an increase, but not the full one because we have already decided to give their new task force, the Economic Task Force, some money on the side. And I think that the task, the Economic Task Force, may not last for a full four years. So I thought that we could we could look at them annually.
Well, I think we only did give them the the Economic Task Force was only a one-year start. Then they go into the they go into the regular SC. It's just the startup. Andy?
Andy? Yeah, I certainly feel that certainly with some new leadership this year as well coming in, that will help and new members, that will help to spur some new programs and projects. So I'm I'm in full support of providing that continual support to them.
Okay, Dirk?
Yeah, I think on this one, I chose to support with the full ask just because they are a city group that I think with more money, they would do more things. They are holy city initiatives that money does come back directly. And so I felt that this was a really good opportunity to get more done in our direction with 100% and et cetera. So supported 100%.
Yeah, I agree with that position, too. Like the Heritage Commission, the Sustainability Commission is a commission of council. It's something we created. So we do have, and and as Terry well knows, we used to support it a lot more, like $30,000, right? Even more initially, the numbers were even bigger. And they did a lot more when they were, you know, had heavier funding, for sure. But they still do a tremendous amount with, you know, what little they have. And as Dirk mentioned, the 100% renewable plan is, I think they're going to, the Energy Task Force there will get quite involved in that. Okay, moving on to Heritage Commission. Dirk, you started up.
Yeah, this one, I'm not really connected to Heritage a whole lot, and but I know people are. So I supported this to the tune of the 5,000.
Okay, and Andy? You're muted.
Important part of our community, and I think that, you know, lots of projects have been ongoing. And I'm realizing how much as our tourist business continues to grow in the community, the interest in Heritage and the uniqueness of our computer, our community comes through. So it's 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 one I can easily support.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, very much the same. I mean, the I put them up for the full amount, and it's pretty much their core funding. They do a lot with the money that we give them.
Yeah, Stuart?
Yeah, it's not really a passion of mine, but it seems like they're doing what we ask of them. So I supported their ask.
Gary?
Absolutely. I love their report and just teasing apart the the little neighborhoods. And I think that's it's important that we have somebody that that's really sort of tracking our history. So all in.
Yeah, and we do have a new heritage plan that council has approved, and they're, you know, looking to work on that. Plus, I think they've got some great new members. There seems to be a lot of energy in that group right now. They've got new members and kind of pushing members around so they could bring more people in, which I think is great. I don't think we ever want to turn down a team volunteer. So that's great. I have no idea why we've lost Janice, so hopefully, Janice is coming back on before we start voting on things. Oh, there she is. Hi, Janice. You want to speak to Heritage Commission? No, you're good. Okay, moving on to Trail Society. Start with Andy.
Become an important part of our community in so many different ways. A main driver for our off-season, I think, is summer and non-winter activities. Trails have become not just a nice to have, but a critical part of our economy as well. So continue to wish to support them. And I know they take that money and turn it into considerably more value.
Yeah, we do leverage well. Janice?
Yeah, I mean, the trails, absolutely. They increase the quality of life to our community. Again, our prospects to retain and attract new members to the community. I do take into account that, you know, the trails grant aid that we give directly to KCTS. On top of that, we do pay a portion of the regional as regional members. We pay 17% of that as well as maintaining the trails within our own community. So but it's definitely a group that is well-supported and adds value to our community. So I'd like to see them get an increase, but perhaps not the whole increase they're asking for.
Dirk?
Yeah, this one I supported fully. I think the stuff that I've seen over the past two years, they're they work their butts off to get membership and other funding, and they don't have a gate. So it's really hard to get, you know, assurance of member-driven. So, yeah, I support it.
Chris?
Yeah, I also supported with with the full amount. I'm very impressed with with the group and what they've done over the last couple of years, specifically the last year with with their growth. And I think that it's a little budding, and I think that there's other opportunities in the next few years. So I'm looking forward to seeing more.
Terry?
Just two points. The Trail Society consistently ranks some of the highest in those surveys that we've taken with the community is in List of Importance. And I think it's tremendous value. You know, for the money we invest, we get we get a tremendous product out there. So I fully support it.
Yeah, I do. I do as well. Stuart has a conflict, so he's actually supposed to be video off, but he's quiet. That's good. But I totally support the the Trail Society, too. I'd like to give them the full amount they ask for. I think they deserve it. But the problem is we have But the problem is, we have a lot of deserving groups, and so I kind of, kind of did the middle-of-the-road thing and gave them not, gave them more than they got last year, but not quite as much as what they were asking. But I also think, well, you know, it's possible that we can, that they can get topped up in some fashion. Okay, so let's see. Yes, Janice?
Sorry, I forgot to say the other note that I had here, which was at the bottom of a bunch of other stuff that I didn't say, is that I also think that, you know, there's a couple of these groups that are, and, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to do anything detrimental, because I know, and I'm sure Stuart's listening, he does a great job of getting grants, and he shouldn't be punished for that, and the group shouldn't be punished for that. But I do think that they're going to be able to access some significant money coming through the next few years from both provincial and federal government levels. So, and I know that Stuart will be all over that.
Yeah, that's for sure, but nobody can guarantee a grant. So we can't, we can think about that, but we can't count on that for any of our groups, right?
Yeah, I think the other thing is too, that the revenues that we support, the organizations, they're able to use and lever that money. So if they don't have a base revenue, then they can't, sometimes applications are only, you know, they're matching funding. So they have to have a base amount of funding, and I think that's where we come in.
Right. That's a good point. I had something I was going to say, and I totally forgot, but it wasn't, it wasn't just for trails. Oh, oh, yes, I know what I wanted to say at the beginning of the meeting for any of our attendees who are still listening. A committee of the whole is when we make recommendations to council. The decisions we make tonight are not final. They'll be finalized in January, because we make a recommendation to council when we approve the minutes that happen on our first January meeting. That's when they're finalized. And it's possible, we're looking into some of these things. It's possible that there could be some COVID restart funding that we might be able to push towards some of our, some of our groups, particularly ones that have lost revenue. So that's something to bear in mind too. More for the audience than anything, I just want you to know that things may not be completely finalized today. Okay, so Stuart can come back. If you're listening, come on back. Hopefully he's listening. Yep, there he is. Good man. Okay, now we're on RCAC. So let's get, Chris, start that up.
I am very impressed with RCAC as always. I love the arts, and everybody knows that. I support it with full amount. I look forward to what we get to have after all of this is done. I think the arts are a lifeblood in our community, and I look forward to it.
Okay, Terry.
Not much to add. This seems like a slam dunk for, again, the services that they give our community and what they're asking, so I fully support them.
Okay, Andy.
It's just, you know, a stellar organization that I think brings tremendous community pride to our, to us, and the, you know, for the money that we invest, we get so much back in favor, so fully support it.
Okay, Janice.
Yeah, I fully support their ask this year. The only, my only thought about it is that I know from now, from being in this position, that we do support them with a number of donations in kind, and it would be interesting, or it would be preferable to have an idea of what that value is along with the straight-out cash grant and aid value of our support.
So are you talking about public works?
Yeah, installing things, you know, blocking things off, the events they do, the work they do is great. But I think we need to have a better idea for our next go-around about what the real cost of, the cost of our support is.
Okay. I think we, we do get a lot of that information in our financial plan when it talks about public works, where they put their time, but if staff wants to send us a note on that, they can. But it's a good point. Okay, let's see. Who am I missing? Stuart and Dirk, I think.
Yeah, I got nothing to add. Totally in.
Okay, Dirk.
Yeah, same thing as Stu, without the accent.
Okay, that's good. All right, let's see. We are, we are at the library, right? Did I miss one?
Museum.
Oh, sorry, museum. We're at the museum. Let's start with Stuart.
Yeah, I supported an increase there. I did not support the whole thing. I didn't see the justification for the whole amount, but some. And to Janice's point, my sense is that we do also fund the infrastructure there as well, and that it is a cost to the community, and it would be useful to understand the full cost of the service as we're making these judgments.
Okay, well, we do get that material. There was a report that Almus sent out, the facilities report, that did have a lot of that.
Yeah, I just think if we're going to be just making decisions about the value of the museum to the community, it's helpful to have all the information of what it actually costs us as we make that decision.
Dirk.
Similar to Stu, I didn't do an increase, just I didn't really see the justification there. And they do have a gate and a door, an ability to get more revenue that way. Maybe not as much as they're asking, but yeah, I support them, just not with the increase.
Okay, Janice?
Yeah, I thought they were, you know, they were asking for a 14% increase. And over the years, I've watched them grow their programming for kids, for adults, for seniors, organize events. Of course, this last year, it's been hard to keep an eye on that, provide jobs for a lot of our graduating kids and university kids coming back to town for the, for the summer through Student Works. Again, you know, we've got a, we've got a museum director who is outstanding at getting grants. And so I hate to punish them because they're good at something. So I actually would love to be able to support them for their full ask.
Okay, Andy.
Yeah, I basically agree. Certainly looked at the programming and the success of the museum the last few years has, you know, shown that they're very dedicated people that are, that are behind the board. And then, of course, as well, the staff that they've put in place. So continue to support them, not quite as much as what they had asked, but, but close.
Chris.
Over the years, I've watched our just amazing museum and the amazing people that are there, you know, go from not having a lot of momentum to, to really creating some momentum up there. And my fear is, the last year is, has beaten them up quite a bit. And, you know, I think that with the museum, the major portion of their job is funding and making sure that the people are working and the archives are complete. We are able to preserve everything that we want to for the future from the past. I supported with almost what they wanted, just because I needed to put some money somewhere else, but I would have brought it up to the full amount if I could.
Terry.
Super quickly, I ran into math problems. I want to support them fully, and I looked at their proposal, but was just trying to figure out how to take what money we have and allocate it fairly. So they took a little bit of, had to carve a little bit off for them.
Okay. And I'm the same. I think they've done a fantastic job. I would love to support them. I think they, their programming, the contribution that they're making to the community is unlike anything the museum's ever done, you know, at least in recent memory. And I'd like to support them fully, but again, we have a lot of valuable programs, so I wasn't able to go to full amount, but I did an increase over last year, and who knows, maybe it'll come out higher. This is another one that I'd be very curious in finding out going forward, not for today, but just what sort of loss they really experienced because of COVID. Because again, restart plans, it's possible there'll be somewhere that we can, you know, make up for some of that from our nonprofits. Okay, so we are now at the library. So let's see, library, we have several conflicts here, so please tune your cameras off. Okay, we're down to the hardcore here. Stuart, start us off.
Yeah, love the library. Support what they do. They're doing a great job. I supported what I thought was a reasonable increase.
Okay, Dirk.
Yeah, I supported them full amount. I think it's a free service. It's unbelievable for the community. And definitely in this year, it's been a really nice touchstone for me and a lot of families. So yeah, I definitely support it.
Chris.
Totally value the library and gave them as much as I could at the time.
Yeah, Terry.
All good. I think libraries are cornerstone of any community, and we've got a great one.
Yeah, I agree. I wanted to give them the full amount, because I do honestly feel that we underfund them, given how other libraries are funded, and I wish we could do more, but we are bound by the decisions we've made about how much taxpayer money to give to community groups. So I couldn't do the full amount either. But, okay, so now we get our conflicted people. And just for people listening, their conflicts are because they have partners who are on the board, and that is considered a conflict, but they're back now to talk about the tennis society. So Janice, start us off.
Yeah, I think the tennis society has quietly worked underneath the, underneath the view of anybody, of everybody else. I do play some tennis, not as much as I'd like to get the chance to. But, you know, the group of volunteers works very hard to maintain the courts with minimal amount of spending, and they are putting money away for a full structural rebuild, which is sort of a make-or-break moment for that, for that facility in town. I think that the $2,000 of additional insurance is probably similar to if you're used to renting a facility and playing a sport, or running a tournament, or running an event, very similar to the sort of insurance that one would look at, but goes over the course of the whole season. Because as Laura mentioned, they don't have a gate. They're constantly open. So I supported them for their full ask.
Okay, Andy.
I didn't support them for the full ask, but it was more a math issue. I was looking at some increases for everybody, but more based on their ask last year with a slight increase for this year. Recognize that that insurance is a bit of a sticky issue, and I'd certainly like to see if our staff can be any more creative in finding solution there for them. I'm a little surprised that $2,000, $2,000 premium. And, you know, I don't know if there's options that they could get insurance through the city with one of our providers. Maybe, maybe there's some creativity available there.
But I think those things have already been looked at a bit at this point. Stuart?
Yeah, I don't really understand this one, and I'm not, don't feel like I'm up to speed enough with the, with the situation and the demand in the community. Just seems like a pretty small group, you know? Nothing against tennis, but seemed quite a jump, and I wasn't prepared to support the full amount, so did a bit of a compromise.
Okay, Dirk.
Yeah, I mean, I do see actually how busy it is, and it is busy all the time, and my kids love to use it. I just see missed opportunities to fundraise. I mean, there was, there were no efforts into spreadsheet to have fundraisers or do bottles like RES and, and the insurance question. I thought, like Andy, there's something creative that can be done, so I didn't support an increase, partly for math as well.
Okay, Chris.
Yeah, insurance. Oh, my goodness. We've been hammered all over the place with insurance over the last year or two. So I get what, where they're coming from, and it's a surprise to their budget. I've given them a little bit more than, than, than across the board here a little bit. And main reason is, we've got an asset there that really needs some work. So I'm hoping that it could be a little bit of a, a jumpstart for them to get that going.
Okay, Terry.
As we discussed this, I was a bit lost with the, the insurance piece too, so I'll confess a bit of confusion along with Stuart. So that's, that's why I had said I'm not sure that, that that's a reason. So I, again, support tennis. Don't play myself much anymore, but I'd love to support them. Again, math.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm conflicted about this too. We, the only reason that their ask has gone up significantly is because of demand by the city for them to get insurance. So we've got a group here who is doing the maintenance on a city-owned facility. If they walk from this, my guess is it will cost the city a lot more having our own people do the maintenance on the facility than it will having this group do it. So I feel like, you know, and I also keep going back and forth on the insurance. Insurance, I understand the insurance. If, if, you know, we insure the tennis courts. If somebody trips over the court, you know, trips over a line on the court and breaks their leg, they're going to sue the city. If they trip over a broom that's been left by a volunteer or something, then they're going to sue the city and the society. I think, I mean, part of it to me just seems, it just drives me crazy. These kind of liability issues drive me crazy. Because the other thing is the instructor, who is, as far as I know, the only instructor they have is Paul Davidier, and he carries insurance through Canada Tennis Association, whatever, you have Canada Tennis, whatever it is, the society. So I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with this one. I feel like, because we asked them to get that money, and they don't have great ways to, to raise money. And as, as was pointed out, they're kind of a maintenance group. They're not really marketers. They're not really, they're not really running membership the way Blackjack runs membership, for example. And maybe they should. Maybe they should get board members on there who do that, if that's what we want. We had an email from our staff that said, well, staff could take over, and staff could start, you know, booking the courts, and staff could start doing that. And, you know, that is a big expense and a time commitment and all that we've been looking at. So I feel like we're boxing these guys into a corner by not giving them money to do something we asked them to do on a facility that we own. So I'm very frustrated. Terry.
Kathy, thanks. And again, this is sort of my first rodeo with this, with this group, so I'm finding my feet around the process. But we are, these motions get, or the conversation that we're having tonight gets moved forward to January to make final decisions on these things. So for what it's worth, I'd like to put some energy into finding out more about this, because I'm with you. It doesn't, doesn't quite feel right.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. I mean, we're going to make motions tonight. We're going to go back through and make motions tonight and hopefully get some things sorted out. They're finalized on January, but, you know, the motion on tennis could be, let's figure it out, let's figure it out between now and January. You know, that's, okay. Okay, Janice?
Yeah, I was just going to make a quick point on the insurance. Although $2,000 sounds like a lot of insurance. You know, we run a three-day hockey tournament, and it's over $500 for three days. So it's not apples-to-apples facilities, but, and it doesn't, and the insurance we get is strictly to indemnify the city. If one of our players gets injured, there's no additional coverage for that. It's just so that if the city and we get sued, the insurance will cover it. That's all it covers.
Yep, for sure. Yeah, I get that. Okay, so let's set tennis aside for the moment, and we'll move on to Tourism Roslyn. So let's see. Chris, why don't you start off?
Tourism Roslyn. I gave Tourism Roslyn just about their ask. And, I mean, they're just, so they're core. We need to keep them, and I talked about momentum a little while ago, and keep that momentum going. I'm looking forward to the government coming to the table a little bit more in the next little bit. So I'm hoping that we'll see some more funding for them, but we got to keep them rolling.
Yeah, okay. Janice?
Yeah, I actually, I actually reduced their funding on my sheet. I'd like to see the Tourism Roslyn be more industry-funded than municipally-funded. I think they've done a great job. They, I think we should fund them somewhat as a municipality, because for sure, having resort-like features around our community adds quality of life for our residents. But, you know, they're not our primary industry. The people who work in there in tourism aren't our, the majority of our employed workers in town, but they are a nice thing to have. So I'd like to see the industry itself do more to promote its own marketing firm.
Okay, Andy?
Yeah, I like what Janice had just said. I think it does, it does in some way, you know, my recognition of the fact that it is a business-oriented you know, my recognition of the fact that it is a business-oriented support for the community. And, and yet it very much is tied into the success of the community as a whole. So I would like to see both a combination of the businesses continue to step up, to support their own marketing, their own development. But I can see as well, the importance of having our community be a player and a member of that as well. So we'll can, I'll continue to just to support and have, and although not a full ask, close to it.
Okay, Dirk.
Yeah, I supported what I thought was a reasonable increase. I think Tourism Roslyn does a good job. I think we're just making our contribution to a, to a much larger function that they perform.
Okay, Terry.
Yeah, I think tourism is again, a critical piece of our economy. I think, I think a little differently than Janice. The reason that I, the reason that I marked it down was, and again, to borrow from Genesis words, I was looking at how well they're doing on, on, and looking at those different other funding streams. And again, caught in this, how do we fund everybody? And I just, I said, this was a, this was a group that I thought was pretty solid and could maybe not get quite the support that they asked for.
Okay, I also disagree with Janice. I think one of the reasons we have such a vibrant community as we do is directly related to tourism. You know, you look at the other communities around us and you know, they don't have the same amount of, you know, hotels and restaurants and shops and especially shops that we have. And I think a lot of that is attributed to tourism. A town, our latest population figures are 3,900 people. It's not a big town. And yet we're able to support a market like Ferrero's and you know, some, some really great things. So I think tourism is really, really important. I think these are very uncertain times. It's, it's very uncertain what's going to happen. Funding has been earmarked from the government and that's great and that will help. But I, I still think we need to support Tourism Roslyn as, you know, as much as, as much as we can. Dirk is off this. He has a contract conflict at the moment, but I think we're done with Tourism Roslyn. So Dirk can come back. Oh wait, Stuart, Stuart.
Yeah, I just wanted to chip in again. I mean, I, you know, I think Tourism Roslyn is doing a great job, not just supporting, you know, promoting tourism, but they're also promoting the city. And that's not an unmitigated upside. I mean, there is a, you know, I have a bit of a challenge with the, the effects of that success and the, and the impact on affordability in the community. You know, I think that's a a challenge we really haven't addressed in, in all sorts of ways, but purely as promoting the community and promoting tourism. I think you're doing a great job and we're getting good value for money. But I don't think we, you know, perhaps we're not putting enough attention to some of those unintended downsides.
Yeah, which, which is one of the reasons the OCP review is going to be so important because growth management is one of the things that's going, we're going to be looking at. I know for sure. And there's tourism brings lots of people here who stay permanently, like me. Janice.
Well, me too, Kathy. Absolutely. And I'm not, I'm not ever trying to take away from the value that they've brought to the community. But I was going to say, you know, I think that this last year, we've really seen that communities who entirely rely on tourism are really suffering. Haven't lost, I think one of our businesses closed, but may have been planning on it anyway. We haven't lost our businesses. We have an affluent permanent resident community that supports our businesses. But absolutely tourism is the icing. So I'm looking for more balance versus going all in on tourism.
Okay, great. Okay, so we'll get Dirk back in. I see we now have the camera on for staff. Hello, staff there. You guys look like you're in a huge hall. We don't need a new city hall, obviously, if you've got room.
Just, just one quick note on the Tourism Roslyn ask is that, is that, you know, basically the money that the city received from the COVID-19 state restart fund from the province is really adequately determined to be part of this kind of the decision-making process when we look at trying to allocate those funds coming up in the new year to help with the restarting of the programs in Tourism Roslyn would be like a top-list candidate for money to be funded from other sources rather than the city offers to help out with some of the discussion that was just, just had.
Okay, that's great information. Thank you. Okay, so now we are going to talk about the Trail Chamber and there's been some chat in the chat about members. And there's a note in there that says there's 49, I think it says 49 Roslyn business members and that there are 25 new ones this year. And I'm not sure if that's in Roslyn or if that's in general. So that's, that's something. But wow, we maybe get a little clarification there. If Doug wants to talk to Rachel, get specific there. Stuart.
I believe we just asked Doug about that, didn't we? And he said 15.
Yeah, that was a clarification and an upgrade. I don't think Doug knew exactly. He said he wasn't exactly sure, but he thought 15 rang a bell. But he's gone ahead and provided more accurate figures there for us.
Okay.
Right, so, okay.
I believe that 49 is referring to.
Andy's still on. I see Chamber has 49 members, which I think is Roslyn members. And then there's another note that says 25 new businesses this year, but I don't know if that is from Roslyn or if that is in the general. And the note says, I think in general. So there we, there we have that. Okay, while if there's anything more that comes through on that chat, we can consider that. But let's start with Stuart. You can start with Chamber. This is for the high-level advocacy program.
Yeah, I mean, I just wasn't clear on this. I mean, I feel like there's, there's some element of, you know, providing general support to business, which I, you know, support, but, but as well, you know, if this is just going to be an industry group, why does an industry pay for it? You know, I, I really confess, I really wasn't clear on what that balance would be. So I, I went for a, what I thought was a lower-end compromise on that.
Okay, Terry.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't 100% confident in the value proposition of the trail. So again, I, I support in general, understand that businesses need to have a body to advocate, advocate for them. It's great that they're there. I, I wasn't clear on that and it affected my, my contribution.
Okay, Chris.
I think their ask was quite large in comparison to what we get for what service that we have received in the, in the past. However, I want to look forward on this. And I, and I think that we, with the new economic development task force that we're forming and the way that we're going to start looking at business again in Roslyn soon, the funding's going to go a long ways, I believe. I hope anyway. So I'm going to be looking at it very closely over the next little while.
Okay, Janice.
Yeah, I thought, I couldn't, I couldn't think of a way to give them their full ask either, but I did want to support them significantly. I think that one of our strategic goals is to increase cooperation regionally. And because they are a trail and area including Roslyn organization and they get businesses and people talking to each other, doing business together. I think that, I think that that moves us towards our goal there. As with Chris, I'm looking forward on this one. I know that the application specifically talked about high-level advocacy, but I have seen them doing a lot of local programs as well. And I think that, I think this is, this is a group that would be well worth supporting to help our businesses grow and get their feet on the ground. And you know, Brian might be able to mention or pipe in that if the trail might be something that would also, or if the chamber would also be something that the restart funds might be applicable to.
Yeah, we're not sure if that would be the case or not, but we could look at it some more.
Okay, Andy.
Yeah, I, I will mirror a number of the comments I already heard. I certainly think that they're in a position, a stronger position now to to advocate for our businesses. And I'm, I'm excited about the fact that they pulled in a bunch of new members. And I know a lot of Roslyn businesses have committed to them. The other thing I found out is that Beaver Valley, Fruitvale does support the Chamber as well. So you know, not just trail, and I know it's a centered trail organization, but obviously it's nice to see sort of the Lower Columbia businesses collaborate. And I think that as pointed out earlier, some of the other business initiatives that are going around. And boy, boy, do we ever need advocates, advocates now going forward with, with the pandemic and the, and the hit that all, all our businesses are experiencing for the next while. So I think they're in a position to, to really be a serious advocate. So I'd like, you know, I have given them some seed money to get going.
Okay, Dirk.
I think, I see this similarly to Stu. I do think that this should be sort of industry-driven and given that there's, we can't keep up with the numbers there, but 49 or more businesses, that's 100 bucks each and it gets to more than what we're offering them. If we look at the averaging and then businesses that I talked to really said their sink or swim is going to be tourists. If tourists come back in, they're going to be fine. If tourists don't come back in, they're not. And so for me, I didn't see the value in this. And I do think it should be industry-driven.
Okay, that's great. I have seen value in it. I've seen particularly this year with how they were really one-stop shop for COVID information. They were fantastic. They really did a very good job of connecting with businesses, not just their members, but also any business, whether they were a member or not, which may have contributed to why they've got 25 new ones this year, 11 of those from Roslyn. Because they did provide a great resource. And, and I think it's, you know, they're, they are kind of unique. We've got other economic development entities like the LCIC, but these guys are really focused on the businesses, sort of local, you know, bricks and mortar businesses. So I did try and give them some, some money as well. Again, got into, into not enough money to spread as many places as I'd like, but that's where we got to. Okay, so we're going to move on to WildSafe. WildSafe, this one, we do, we are required to do the amount that they've requested for the period. They, we can't horse trade on that one. So it's support or not support here. Terry, start with you.
Yeah, I, I want to continue to support WildSafe.
Okay, Chris.
There are new chicken bile officers, so I gotta support it.
Okay, Janice.
Hoops are us. I'm in for support.
Okay, Andy.
Yes, and they may be chicken bile officers, but I think they'll be good chicken education teachers too for our community. So keen to support them.
Or even more so, totally.
Okay, Stuart.
A big thumbs up.
Okay, Dirk.
Doing it for the chickens.
Well, I'm doing it for the bears actually, because we got a lot of new residents in here and we have to continually educate people about wildlife, human interaction. So I support as well. Okay, so now we're done with all the groups. Now I want to go back and ask council, we have, we have two ways to do this. We could take a moment, look at your spreadsheets. If you want to massage the numbers anyway after, as a result of this discussion, we can do that. Then we can do it two ways. We can have somebody put in a motion and we yay or nay it, or you go over and look at column D, which goes in there and actually did do the average thing that we do with the SIP grants. And if you live with those, can we get the spreadsheet so we see all of them? Oh no, we do see all of them. Sorry, I see. Oh, now I don't see them. Sorry. I said the wrong thing. Yeah, no, go, go back over. So we keep the red column. We see everybody in the red column. Yeah, that's perfect. So the average number there is what we would give to each of those groups. So I'm going to go through, I'll just go through each. And if you want a different number, we still have to add up to the 287,253 at the bottom. So we can't go hog wild crazy. This does add up to the right number at the bottom. Janice.
Well, I was just gonna, I actually had it on my notes to start off with, although we were a little random getting started. But the, you know, we, we set our funding limit before we started working through leases and new agreements and operating agreements with a lot of our societies. So a lot of their funding actually came from our operating, our operating budget versus our grant and aid budget previously. As we rewrite everything, now it's coming out in grant and aid. I don't, I mean, it, that would be unfortunately a staff thing to figure out, you know, how we took the money from operating and now are putting in grant and aid. But if we don't adjust our funding limit, the ultimate result will be that we'll be reducing funding available for everybody.
Are you making a suggestion?
Well, I, committee of the holes are for discussion. So, you know, I do think, I do think that if we don't, that if we just, you know, pick an arbitrary percentage of our earned income and we don't take into account that we are creating more transparent operating agreements and lease agreements, et cetera, et cetera. Where we're asking, where we're, instead of taking funds out of our operating budget to support groups, we're actually embedding it in the grant and aid. So it's all visible. That that grant name is naturally going to grow because we're, even though we're not giving them more support than we normally did, the amount that we're actually going to have to have in grant and aid is going to have to grow, or the natural result will be that we'll have to cut support for our groups.
I'm not following you, Janice.
Yeah, I'm not actually following you either. I mean, as, as the percent, as the, as our tax revenue grows, this fund grows, which happened like last year, we had 273 and this year we have 287 or whatever the difference was, right? So we then also have, as we had this time, we had more groups come to us, which then created, created a problem. I, I, I guess I'm not, I'm not seeing what you're asking to do.
I'll try again.
In small words and short sentences. Wait, I don't see if Dirk, maybe Dirk can translate Janice speak for me.
Well, I'll do my best, but I, I think as an example, if the museum has been asked to cover some of their operations that they weren't asked to cover before, then if we give them the same amount, you know, their revenue will go down because they're, they're not getting some of the money from the city. I think that was Janice's point, perhaps, Janice?
Kind of the same, only I, I think previously, and we can use the museum as the example. Previously, what would happen is the museum would get a grant and aid, but then a lot of the things would get covered out of the city's operating budget. So like for instance, utilities or maintenance. And as we've gone through and renewed a bunch of those leases and operating agreements, we have taken that cost of maintenance light bulbs, you know, basic stuff, and we've put it into the grant and aid. So we haven't actually changed the amount that we're supporting the group with. We've just increased the grant and aid amount. I can see staff's going to help us.
I assume staff will help us. I'm going to have, I'm going to call on Stuart and I'm going to ask staff if they want to jump in here. Stuart.
I think if we're asking more of the societies or the groups, then that's up to them to explain and argue why they should get more.
Okay, staff, I can't see any of you. Look where you are in your tiny little box there. Yes, Brian.
So just on, if we're using museum as the example, which is probably the most relevant one we could be talking about. When we renegotiated the contract last year, we also increased their grant and aid for some of the things that were, we wanted them to look at trying to do. Overall, in the budget, we did not remove any of the additional expenses that we would have used for operations. So really, the overall funding for the museum on the city's perspective went up a little bit. And so we basically, instead of transferring our, our fees, like our fees we transferred to them to that, for them to use, but we also gave them grant and aid to cover those fees. But we did not reduce our expenses on the line item to help to either look at supporting them for other things in the future or taking any type of surpluses that we have from that operations and trying to put it into discussion, discussion purposes for asset management plan to move forward with capital replacement plans or, you know, additional activities and things like that. So, so that's kind of how that one played out.
Okay, thanks. Does that help, Janice?
I mean, I don't think it does, but I'm not really sure how better to explain what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me ask this question. Right now, we're looking, excuse me, we're looking at the $287,000. We've looked at each group's you know, application. We've done tentative allocation of those monies. Are you, no, please leave the spreadsheet up. Are you comfortable with going forward and, and looking at this? We can look at either going with the averages that are in column D, or we can put up individual motions about. amount, specific amounts that you want to change? Or are you saying this is a gong show and we need to start over? And so we've wasted our time here?
Not item D.
Okay, good.
Definitely not.
I'm, I'm okay with the averages. I just, perhaps if we could round some of the numbers off. Just, just because, you know, I'd hate all those people having to enter all those extra numbers in over the next few years.
Yeah, and they are three and four-year, you're cute. Thanks. Okay, we've had a request to take a quick break before we go on. Is that, oh, no, we're all good. We don't need to take a break. Okay, sorry. Okay, so we have a suggestion that we look at the average column and round the numbers off.
I would second that.
Okay, okay.
Unless, unless somebody wants to change their, their tally. I don't, can't think of a finish we're going to argue over the, you know.
Yeah, that would be the first thing that I, that I was going to say. Does anybody want to change any of the numbers that they put in their, in their column? Dirk first, and then, and so you had your hand up. And then Andy.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want to change any of them. I think if we were to look at the, sort of the average column, the thing that jumps out at me is that, you know, Blackjack, we're offering them ten percent of their ask. You know, I don't know what they'd do with twelve hundred bucks. The tennis court could do more with twelve hundred bucks. So maybe we can move it around to my suggestion to fit the organizations that could benefit more from this fund.
Right, okay. Janice and then Andy.
I was just going to say that in terms of Blackjack, I mean, after the conversation has gone around the table, so to speak. You know, I, I do, you know, that they're a fee-for-service type business. I think that, you know, they probably can manage without funds from us.
Okay. Okay, so Andy, you were next.
Just looking at the fact that if we were committing to or voting on each organization, only, only two of us supported Blackjack. So right there, you know, it wasn't a majority. So if, and yet all the rest of them, it looks like a majority have supported those organizations. So if we do it democratically, then Blackjack wouldn't, wouldn't be in a position to receive any funding.
Yeah. I think that's, that's, that's a fair point. So sorry Blackjack, but those funds are going to have to be reallocated. Okay, so we now have Golden Bear and Blackjack are both off the list. So now we've got Seabean, which is pre-approved, so we don't have to talk about them. We have Sustainability Commission. So we now have some money to play with here to top up these other, other groups. And we can do it. We could have.
Don't Andy and Janice have money to reallocate?
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, we can just, can't we just open the, open the sheet and?
Yeah, why don't you just tell, if, I think Rachel's controlling the sheet there. Why don't you just tell Rachel where you want that money to go and the others will, the others will average. Don't do it in the red column. Rachel, do it in the persons column when they tell you. So go over to Janice. Because there's a formula in that D column. So Janice, where do you want? You just had whatever money. What did you have there? You had four thousand?
Yeah, I have four thousand.
Okay, so.
You can put it on tourism. There it is.
Do we have to make a motion and not give Blackjack any money?
No, I don't think we do because we haven't actually made too many motions yet. I mean, we, we can, but I don't think we have to. Let's, okay, so you put it all on, yeah, you are playing Blackjack there, right? You put it all in a way. Okay, and then, let's see, who else had the money up there? Oh, Andy, put yours.
So I'll put it on the tennis club.
Okay. So you go to tennis, you had four thousand. That's going to put them over. Or what did you have in there?
I had four, yeah, I had four thousand, but, but is that what it averaged out? It's not going to be that amount, right?
You had five.
Yeah, five thousand, yeah.
Right, right, sorry. I can't see my contribution. Oh, yeah, yeah. Got to go back to my own sheet here.
Yeah, okay, so. So you're putting it all on tennis?
Yeah, and however that works out, I mean.
Let's see what it looks like. Put eight thousand and seventy-five in on tennis and let's see what it does there. Okay, so that puts them up. That's, that's, yeah, that's, that's pretty good. Okay, so now let's go through the list here and, and take a look. So we've already accomplished. So we're at Sustainability Commission. They're going to get thirteen thousand plus. Now we do have, you know what, Stuart, I think your thing is, I don't know, just too complicated to round them up. We still have to get a number.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I'm just, my, my point is I don't know whether it's a good process to have more than I asked for. You know, I mean, what's, what's to stop some?
No, no one's getting more than they asked for.
Well, Andy's deciding more than what the tennis society is asking for.
But that doesn't matter. His, his.
What would stop some unscrupulous counselor from putting two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand on to one group and, you know?
Well, yeah, I guess you got that point. You got that point. Oh, dear.
We've had that happen before.
We did?
I do, I do agree with Stuart. It offsets the average if we're weighting it really, really heavily in one place.
Yeah, I don't think, I think that's a reason we want to sit.
Okay, so Janice and, let's see, Janice, did you go over on yours too? Where's Janice? Okay, sorry, Andy, you're going to have to re-approach yours. You can't put more than five thousand. Put, put Andy's tennis at five thousand. Okay, okay, so now you can either allocate some more money elsewhere. And then there's many worthy groups on the line who would love to have your contribution. Or you can put it in the fund, deal with it later.
Yeah, okay. Then, and of course, okay, let's do it towards K C T S then.
Okay, so K C T S.
Do I just still have leftovers?
Yeah. So if you put in, you know, I've lost track of what your leftovers are, to tell you the truth.
It'll title at the bottom. Just keep adding.
Okay, so put in thirty there. Thirty thousand, because that's their max ask. Okay, good. All right. Yes, that's right. We still got a little, yeah, yeah. I put those formulas in there. They work, don't they? And now you just got to do the, do the balance there to get to two-eighty-seven, two-fifty.
So another fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay, somebody that's short. So that could be Sustainability Commission you could go up on, you could go up.
Let's do it to Sustainability Commission.
On the museum, you could go up on tourism.
I'll do it on the Sustainability Commission.
Okay.
It's got more than that.
Yeah, it should be up.
Still six hundred.
There you go.
I gotta take off.
Then take off like fifty bucks or some, whatever.
Forty-eight.
Beautiful.
Still got a little more to add there. Got another two hundred.
Tourism Roslin.
Tourism Roslin, another two hundred, Tourism Roslin.
But he didn't max to sustainability.
Yeah, you could max sustainability.
Oh, let's do that then. Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so Sustainability Commission goes to.
Thought we had.
Thousand, is that right?
He needs another two hundred bucks to put somewhere.
Okay.
Tourism Roslin was the other one.
Oh, that's perfect. You're done. Okay, everybody. So now we need a motion. We had a motion not to do Golden Bears. We'll have a motion not to do back Blackjack. Who makes the motion with tears? Many. Dirk makes the motion. Janice seconds it. All in favor. Okay, and then I think we could take another motion and just say that we will accept the average amounts for the other groups. And then we don't have to do each one if that's all right with staff. Staff, is that all right? Or do you want them individually?
No, just do one as presented and then we'll do a spreadsheet on that and round some numbers up. And then it will go to council in January for final ratification.
Okay, Dirk makes the motion or do you have a question?
I, I have a question, just cognizant of the fact that those averages take into consideration the ones that Andy and Janice and Stuart and myself had that were conflicts. We've got numbers in there. So we didn't talk about them. We didn't vote on them, but we added, we contributed to the value. I don't know if that matters.
Yeah, well, we used to make it matter in the, in the SIP grants, right? We took them out and then it was the average. Instead of seven average, it was four average, or it was six average, or whatever.
That does get really mathematically complicated because we're not, we're not giving the full amount in most of the cases, or in some of the cases.
I would like a staff recommendation on this. My inclination is to leave it as it, you guys didn't contribute.
I would just say leave it as is because they're all fairly consistent to what the ask is. And it's a multiple, it's not just one counselor making a decision on this stuff. And we're going to have conflicts on this kind of idea. So as long as the ask isn't crazy, like as, as Counselor Spooner noted, that he's not asking for two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars for the Trail Society. Everything is kind of commonality here. And so I think that we're fine with the way that it's presented and the way that we've done it.
Okay, I, I think that's great. All right, so take a motion from someone to accept the average numbers and we turn it over to staff to round them up and critify it. So who wants to? Janice and Terry. Okay, all in favor? All right, good. Okay, everybody, so we will now have a motion to close this meeting and then we're going to go to a new Zoom at six o'clock. So counselors, you know how to get to the Zoom through your email. And any attendees who want to come back for the regular council meeting, please check the agenda that's on our website. At the top. Janice has a comment or she's just making the motion to adjourn?
A quick comment. I just wondered if, well, when you bring this back in January, Brian, will you also bring back some information about which of these organizations might qualify for the Safe Restart?
Yeah, we have a staff report going about a whole bunch of things about the COVID-19 staff or Safe Restart Program. And so we can talk about looking at these ones to see if there's an additionality that we can look at at a percentage or something to help with costs for 2021 potentially.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, thanks, everybody. And thanks to our attendees who hung in there with us. We really appreciate your interest. Bye, everyone. We'll see you all at six o'clock.